Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our Town Council meeting, August 8th, 2017. If we could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the July 5th of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If we could please take a moment of silence regarding our service members and first responders here and abroad. Thank you. In accordance to Mass. General Law, will anybody be taping our meeting tonight? And if so, could you please identify yourself and your organization you represent? So it looks like just El Chapo.
I'm not taping, but I will be taking photos of the scouts.
Okay.
Those still photos.
Thank you. Public comments? Carolyn? Carolyn, could you please state your name and address, just for the record?
Yes. My name is Caroline Kozick. I live at 9 Smith Avenue in East Long Meadow. Have been a resident of East Long Meadow since 1973. My purpose here tonight is to bring attention to the properties in East Long Meadow. The yards that are filled with trash and junk. I would like to have the bylaws updated. I've taken photos, and these photos right here are from the house that is directly across the street from me, my one and only neighbor on Smith Avenue at 20 -- she lives at 28 Smith Ave. There's lots of metal and trash that's thrown in the yard. It's been there for years and years. Her husband used to work for the gas company. He's now deceased. There's containers that are metal, huge ones, large metal pieces. There's three air conditioners that are thrown in with all the weeds right across from my house. The other concern is, this car has been in the -- I know that you can have a car, but -- or a truck, it was her husband. It's been parked there for 10 years. Doesn't work or anything. It's not registered. I can understand that you can have one vehicle, but one vehicle for 10 years sitting in the yard with no use is, I can't understand why it's allowed. And this is another concern. The trees and everything have grown up to their front door. She's -- my neighbor is 70 years old. She's on oxygen and lives alone. Her front door, the leaves and debris have grown, and they're intertwined in her screen door, so that if a fire, and I've been to the fire department and notified them, if her back door was on fire, she can't get out of her front house. And I'm wondering, is there a service or somebody that could help her out? That's one of my questions. The second house I have is directly across the street. My uncle, Donald Ferris, lives on 30 Yan Street. This house right here is on 19 Yan Street, and is, the whole property is blight. The grass on this house, no one lives there, at 19 Yan Street, is covered with grass that's over four feet high. I've notified the Board of Health. They've been out to both locations and have seen them. This house also has an unregistered car that's in the yard, along with a boat, toys, the garage doors are gone. It also has a couch that was thrown into the backyard. The whole property is a disgrace. And what I'm looking for is just to update the property, because we're putting my uncle's house on the market next week, and it's like across the street, two houses down. People in East -- come to East Long Meadow, they expect nice lawns, houses that are taken care of, and when they come in, if they pass that house, they're going to say, "I don't want to live with someone that's across the street with this type of property." And that's what I'm looking for here tonight, is to see if we can get bylaws that will either find these people, or have some, something that can be done, you know, either. Even if the lawn was mowed, so that if somebody drove by and saw the house, they wouldn't know that it was in, you know, in foreclosure or something. And that's all I'm asking for tonight. I thank you for your time. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any council comments regarding?
Just one, if I would, if I may, I would ask that the Town Manager would contain. I don't think we saw anything here tonight that requires any bylaw updating. I believe that we already have the regulations in place to prevent such a thing. So I would just ask that it be referred to the Town Manager for further looking.
I know that both properties are under order by the Health Department.
Okay.
So it's in process, but y'all know, process takes a long time.
It does.
Is 19 Yan Street bank-owned?
I don't know if it's bank-owned. Amy was not in, she's on vacation this week, and I just heard that these were the properties that were of concern. So I didn't check in great detail, but Janine did say that they are in process, that they're under order. So something is being done. I know the fire department's been to one of them, and the Board of Health is well aware and doing something, but I don't know the whole, all the details. I can get that for you, though.
Yeah, appreciate it.
I know, back probably a couple of years ago at least, we have, we have put some form of process in place, so that if there is a house that's, be it bank-owned, or abandoned, or whatever, that if we exhaust all resources in trying to find the owner and get them to do something, that the town could do something, and then those subsequent bills would be added to their property tax, and upon sale, then, you know, the town would be reimbursed for their, for their work there. So I know there are avenues to take care of this, you know, in the worst case, so.
I'll, I'll check on what's going on with both of them.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Sure, absolutely.
Denise, Town Manager's report, please.
Well, good evening, everyone. You have two full pages since we missed a meeting. I guess there's a lot that goes on between meetings. In another step toward putting together the organization and vision by the new charter, Dawn Fonte, who was the Assistant Collector, has been promoted to the town's Treasure Collector. Is there an earthquake, or what's going on?
Cheerleading trial.
Oh, cheerleaders!
It's my heart, it's okay.
I didn't think this was that exciting. Stop by and congratulate Dawn on the next step to her, in her career. Last week's National Night Out, for those of you that were not able to attend, was a great success. Thanks to all those that helped plan the evening, I've heard great feedback. So it was pretty well attended. I don't know compared to last year. I wasn't here last year, but I heard there was more. It seemed like there was more people. The Planning Board approved two large projects recently, a 40-acre solar farm on 175 Denzilah Road, and the East Long Meadow Skilled Nursing Center project on Maple Street. Also, the Director of Planning and Community Development, Robin McDonald, and I, and I only, I know that you all know who the planning and planner is and stuff, but since this is now put online and stuff, I wanted people to get familiar with who the people are. We're looking at forming a zoning bylaw review committee. If you know of anyone that would be interested in serving on that committee, please have them contact me or Robin. We've also discussed the need to look at the town's strategic plan, which was, has not been revised since 1996. Finally, Robin and I met with Peter DiMali, who's a strong, has a strong background in community development. He's a planner that I worked with a long, long time ago, but also a big, he's the owner of a professional design services in Connecticut, and has a strong developer's background. So just wanted to pick his brain for what a developer looks for. And since I know him very well, I treated him to lunch, and he gave me what was in his brain, well, some of what was in his brain. The purpose of the meeting was to get some fresh ideas on boosting our approach to community development. He had a number of good suggestions, including adding a page to our website that would be used as a resource by businesses interested in locating in East Long Meadow, and to have the planner become involved in resources in the region, such as the New England Knowledge Corridor, the Economic Development Council of Western Mass, and the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission. I've attached a bit of information. New England Knowledge Corridor is a really interesting group of people. And not all of these are going to have things that are specific to our size community, but it will grow our network base, and sort of expose us to other ways of thinking that other communities have successfully done something. That's more the piece that we need right now, so. Our Health Director, Amy Petroski, has been selected to become a member of the Executive Board of the Western Environment, the Massachusetts Environmental Health Association. This is a really exciting development for Western Mass, as we have very limited representation on statewide environmental health programming, and this puts East Long Meadow in a better position for grants, other state resources, and consideration in hosting conferences and trainings. It will also allow Amy to be aware of emerging trends in prevention and education, and bring that awareness to the Health Department. Additionally, it furthers part of the Health Board's vision for East Long Meadow to be a standout community in Western Mass. And she continues to be growing a good reputation as a go-to person in the whole Western Mass region, so that's great. Also related to the Health Department, not so great. Last week, we were informed that East Long Meadow, as well as 59 other communities in the state, have mosquitoes that tested positive for West Nile. You have a Public Health Department update that was just, I got it as I was writing this today, and it has cautions and a little bit about what's going on. In response, the Health Department has initiated an increase in our trapping efforts. In addition, we've increased outreach and education to our residents, and now have DEET wipes available in the office, and they were distributed at National Night Out and to town groups such as the Recreation, COA, because youth and elderly are the most vulnerable, and at the Rotary Concerts, to the Rotary Club, so that they can hand them out at the concerts. This year's flu clinic has expanded to include not only the flu vaccine, and I have a bunch of words here that I said, "Thank you, Amy, for telling me all this," but also pneumovax, which covers pneumonia, meningitis, and serious bacterial infections, T-DAP for tetanus, diphtheria, and pertussis, and finally, the shingles vaccine. All of the vaccines will be offered for free or subsidized for our uninsured and underinsured residents. The clinic is scheduled for October 4th, from 2:30 to 6:30 in the Town Hall parking lot. If you remember, last year was the first year we did that, and we sold out, and it was just the flu vaccine, and it was in the parking lot as well. So we're hoping for a good day, and we're hoping to sell out again. Household Hazardous Waste Regional Collection Day is scheduled for September 9th, 9 to 1 at Minnetoga Regional High School in Wilbraham. In order to participate, the residents have to schedule an appointment with the Health Department, and I've included a flyer for you all to spread it around, if you like. Human Resources news. With the funding from the Community Compact Grant, along with some budgeted funds, the Collins Center has been interviewing all members of the Town Employees Union, known as TEU, for the accuracy of their job descriptions and appropriate compensation. The project is a condition of the current TEU contract, so it's not that we were just trying to think something up, but as long as we were mandated to do that for the TEU bargaining unit, we also had enough money, because of the Community Compact money, to add the employees that are not in a union. So not, not me, because mine is very new, but employees like Marge, who is not union, just some of the other, a couple of the Public Works guys, Roy Esposito and Bruce Feeney, you know, those, that level, that mid-management level and upper-management level. So, so we're studying those as well, as long as we had enough money to do that. It's a good thing to just sort of get a test of where we are in the market. In a first step to allowing for reconfiguration of the Town Clerk, Treasure Collector, and current Building Department area to fit the new financial organization, the building official will be moving up to the Public Works portion of the second floor. Along with addressing the Finance Department's needs, the move will also improve the work floor flow for the Building Department. As part of establishing the Tri-Town Trolley Program, the Council on Aging has received their latest new vehicle, a Ford MV1. And you can see it, it's parked right there. You've, you've got a picture of it in here as well, because it's a really unique vehicle. Carolyn said that it is, the, the way that it, the handicap can access it is amazing. It's smaller, so that those trips that you only need two or three people, you at least now have something that is in a 12-passenger bus to have them sitting in and going all around town. So she's very excited about it. You ask her, she'll take you for a ride. She's asked me to take, she wanted to give me the keys for tonight. I said, "I don't, I don't want the keys. I'm not taking anybody for a ride." And I don't want anything to happen to it while I have the keys. Also, on the COA front, it is a common problem for food pantries to have very low stock in the summer, and East Long Meadow is certainly experiencing low inventory. I've attached an article that talks about what is needed, so that we can all spread the word. Karen Decker and I are cooking up a kind of, some kind of competition by departments within Town Hall to see if we can, I don't know, maybe buy the pound, or something, who, you know, if you have three people, can you get 15 pounds' worth of food? You know, something like that. So we, we haven't come, come up with a firm scheme, but we're, we're scheming. And anybody is welcome to bring any food either here, or if you're at Town Hall, just, you're welcome to do that, and monetary donations are acceptable as well. The Recreation Department's been very busy. They've had a busy summer season with a large variety of camps and programs, and they're moving now into the fall/winter programming. I'll get a brochure shortly after Labor Day, and I'll make sure to share that with you all. Public Works is running smoothly while working through a number of changes in the department. As I did not fill the Town Engineer, nor the GIS specialist positions as they became vacant earlier in the year, Acting Superintendent Bruce Feeney and I are looking for the best way to address the needs of DPW, and possibly changing some of the management positions to better align with those needs. As an example, the GIS position was built to be part GIS and part Public Works, some functions, some operations functions. The Town Engineer also had some Town Engineer functions, but we don't need a full-time Town Engineer, so they were doing, so we're going to resort that. GIS touches almost every Town Department. It's invaluable to the assessors, to the Planning Department, to the Fire Department. So it really is more a programming IT kind of function that will cover all the different departments. So we are looking at possibly moving that over there. We've done some research as to where it falls in different towns, where they, and it really is all over the place, but there are quite a few that, that do it in the IT. And, and then, you know, looking at the needs for the Town Engineering piece, and those extra pieces that were both in the Town Engineers and the GIS, how are we going to sort of regroup everybody up there? So that's a work in process. It's going to take a while. We're not going to make any changes until this new superintendent is here, but at least we'll be ready to really settle in that department and get things in line. Also, the Public Works summer projects are winding down. The major water project on Maple Shade is just about done. I think last week they said two weeks, so I'm giving them two more weeks, because I don't think it'll be done. And the school projects, because in the summer, they work a lot on the schools, and those, those are winding down now. Although you'll see in my, a little bit later, they've got to figure out how to reconfigure something to add a new classroom. Library Director, Leila Johnston, has been working on a strategic five-year plan for the library. She had a series of meetings. It went very well. She was very enthusiastic. In addition to bringing a vision to the future of the library, the strategic plan will enhance our grant opportunities as well. I had a visit from the School Superintendent, Gordon Smith, this afternoon regarding the soon-to-began school year. With a large number of kindergarten students enrolling in the last few weeks, the class size in each of the existing kindergarten classes has increased to more than 24 per classroom. The School Board is planning a special meeting later this week to make a decision on whether or not to add an additional kindergarten class for this year, thus the need for Public Works to start moving desks from one place to another, although Gordon said it's not going to be a problem. If approved, the additional expense could be funded from an existing revolving fund related to a previous kindergarten program. I, I was unaware, but there was a pay-for kindergarten program, and it was, the money went in through a revolving fund, and there is enough money left in that fund right now to fund the teacher for this year, knowing that they need to figure out what they're doing next year. They don't know yet if it's just a bubble, or if it's really, we're attracting a lot of people to East Long Meadow with children, so, one year at a time. It's not decided yet. The School Board is meeting later this week. Lastly, I wanted to take the time while Council, Councilman Eric Madison is at his last meeting to thank him for the time he's spent on the council, and also the many years of service on a number of the town's boards and committees. Good luck with all your future endeavors. I'm sure you have an exciting future ahead of you, but thank you from the residents of East Long Meadow. I'm sure they really appreciate what you've done. Respectfully submitted, Denise Menard. Do you have any, any questions?
One, Denise. You mentioned, and I'm trying to remember where it was. I think it was in the Community Development Report. Working on a long-range plan.
Yes, strategic plan, yeah.
Yeah. And it came to mind, when you said that, that in the Charter, we reference under, I think it's Article 3, Section 2, under the powers and duties of the Town Manager, to prepare an update in conjunction with Department Heads, Boards, and Towns, the Town Council, and residents, a long-range plan every five years. Now, I know we haven't really put that on the front burner, because there's been so many other more pressing issues, but it seems to me the two of those would work hand-in-hand with each other.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Great, okay. That was, I just wanted to mention it.
Thank you.
Because when you said it, a red, red light went off, it, ah-ha.
Yep.
I just had a quick question as well. On what Superintendent Smith commented about the kindergarten, is he anticipating this to be moving forward, so if we add the kindergarten, the next year, first grade, and so forth? Is that just?
He's not sure. Kathy, you might be more connected to that than I, but he was saying, you know, there's a kindergarten class, it's hard to, he had, I think he said, and I didn't want to put the number, because I wasn't positive, I didn't write down the number, but I thought he said in the last couple of weeks, he had 20 new kindergartners.
That's extraordinary. That's exceptional.
Yeah. So is it just an odd year, or is it, you can usually tell from birth records, right?
You can tell.
What's going to be coming?
A significant amount of, of an entering population from birth records, but you can't necessarily predict moves into town during the summer, and summer appears to be, I'm looking at a real estate lawyer, appears to be a popular time for families to move, and get kids settled, and then, you know, acclimated to a new school system. It can be a number of things, but 20 for one particular grade is significant.
It's a lot, yeah, yeah.
And if class size is at 24, the research will say, especially at kindergarten, where they're beginning to, the readiness to read 19 to 20 in a class is probably what the research would support, so.
And he said they were 23 now, and if they had 20, and there are seven classrooms or eight classrooms, that's, that's more than 24, but I just wanted to be on the safe side of.
I'm looking at Mr. Fonseca in the audience. Can you, do you share any, any other information about that?
He was ready to stand right up there.
What I can share with you is the conversations that have taken place in the past couple of days. Since June, roughly, 25 new families have registered for kindergarten. We are also hearing that there could be two more coming. So we have scheduled the meeting for Friday morning to address this issue, with recommendations from both the Principal and Assistant Principal of Meadowbrook. Gordon, Pam, and the Chair, Deidre May, who have been working on this, this week through this problem, it just came to us. I mean, to Kathy's point, we don't know if it's an anomaly or not. And as far as, and to your point, Dawn, we don't know, you know, one year at a time, because we do get families that move out. It is a fluid situation. So at this point, we're just going to address, with school starting in three weeks, we're just going to address this, and then we'll work through what we foresee in the future, and keep everybody informed. So at any time, if.
Bill, I'm not going to put you on the spot by asking for an answer. I just want to throw something out for your thought. If memory serves me correctly, the money that was in the revolving fund left over from the prior kindergarten program was going to be used to offset the cost for several years under the new program. If you hire another teacher this year with the money remaining from the revolving fund, will that have a future impact on the appropriations to support the full-time kindergarten program?
Probably yes.
Okay.
Because I'm not sure what is left in that account. I'm not sure the exact, all I was told was, there's enough money to support it for this year.
For this year.
Right. And as I recall, it was going to offset the program for so many years, basing in the full cost.
Right.
So that will have an impact on that.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
But again, it's too early to tell.
What that would be. Yeah, and I didn't, I didn't expect you to answer. It was actually more to confirm that my thoughts were correct, and to let these folks know that there are no free lunches, it's going to have an impact.
Somewhere later.
Okay, now, okay later, yeah. I think there was 61,000 left, and so it'll.
How much, 61?
I think that's what Gordon was saying, there's about 61 left. So it'll fund this year, but yeah, if it was a five-year plan, and we're in year three, we're, you know, using it up.
I mean, on the other side, if this is a permanent, you know, if this, let's say these, this is a permanent number, our Chapter 70 allocation will go up as well. So there is, there is the offsetting when we submit our enrollment.
October 1, yeah.
Right.
All right, so there are, there are detriments, and there are benefits to this, but we do have a plan, I believe, you know, I don't want to speak for the entire committee, that this will be able to be taken care of this year through the use of the, what's in the revolving account, because it came to us so late, and we really couldn't plan accordingly.
Yeah. Thank you.
Any other comments? Good?
Good.
Thank you. Thanks, Bill. Denise, thanks for your report. Looking for approval for the minutes, if we start with Item 6A, if we could have a motion to approve the open session minutes from our July 27th meeting?
June 27th.
June, excuse me.
So move.
Second.
I'm going to make amendment, I was talking to Janie. The comments regarding the town of Hamden, in the first paragraph, Hamden and East Long Meadow should be in reverse. It suggested, in a first read, that Hamden wants to have their water in store coming into East Long Meadow. So obviously, and I explained that to Janie, so that's going to be switched, and, and I think there was a second comment about East Long Meadow that should also have been Hamden, also in that first paragraph. And the only thing I wanted to bring up was the question I asked, brought to the gentleman from Tyon Bond, asking specifically, what percentage of this proposed water use will go to Grathorne? And I don't, whether you want to use the word "Grathorne" or one particular entity, I know I said "Grathorne," but you can, I'll leave it up to the council to decide how they want to word it. And the response was 20 percent. And I just think that's important, because if you read the entire minutes, there is zero mention of Grathorne, and I believe Joe was the first one to bring up the question, which, which, you know, when you have one entity that's supposedly going to take 20 percent, at least should be part of our minutes. And that's about it. That's my amendment, if that could be incorporated to the motion, that would be appreciated.
Did you already make those with Janie?
I did.
So I'll offer an amendment to the motion on the floor, that the minutes be approved as amended.
Okay.
And I'll second that.
Any discussion?
So not to make. So, not to make it complicated, but first we have to vote on the amendment and then the original motion, so.
We're going to miss you.
All in favor? The motion passes.
Chris, the amendment.
So, now the original motion.
Now, we have to, yeah. We still have to vote on the original motion.
Right, okay. So, for 27. So, we're good.
Yep, well, then I'll move the question that we vote on the original motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. So, if we move to 6B for July 11, the open session minutes.
I'm going to make a couple more amendments before we do it, so it'll be part of the original motion. Again, I spoke with Jeannie before the meeting. I was, in my response to Dawn Starks, I said that council members can meet as long as there's not a quorum. It came out in the minutes as forum. Okay, so I'll change the word quorum to forum.
No, forum to forum.
Yeah, what he just said. And then, and this is just because it's more symbolic than anything else, I was the one who made the motion that for Kevin as president and you for vice president, I think they had it as Paul. Now, again, it's not a big deal, but that's just, it was just correction. And I already brought those to her attention. So, with those corrections, I'll make the motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
Wait, second?
Second.
Motion passes. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. And if we move to 6C, that's for July 11, again, under executive session minutes.
Move to accept the submitted.
Second.
No discussion on this. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. Under communication, correspondence, and announcements, the town council would like to welcome, we have three Eagle Scout members here tonight from Boy Scout Troop 179. They are Philip Franklin, Nicholas Leonie, Jonathan Makarowski, and Kenneth Nichteen.
Nick.
If you guys could come forward, we'd like to present you with these letters of recognition. We appreciate your services for serving your community.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, good job.
Congratulations.
Put a call.
Congratulations.
Thanks for a great chat. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Interesting, do you want to actually like presenting in the, is it like for all of the news?
Sure.
Is it, do you want to hold one of those? Hey, great.
Thank you.
Sorry, don't come in. Thank you. Right here. Smiling. Thank you very much.
Should I move to go out of order to go to 63?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sorry.
I have to take.
Mr. Vice President, I'd like to make a motion that we go out of order of the agenda and move directly to Item 9A and 9B for the 630 and 645 public hearings as advertised.
Yes.
And then to return back to order.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So, can we go to licensing ads at this time?
No, 9A. 9A, so.
We have to go all the way down to 9.
Public hearing on the bylaw revision.
And whoever's here for that public meeting, could you come up and speak for us, please?
I have too many changes in my seat.
Do we have to move on directly?
No.
But you can if you'd like.
No, no.
It's up to you.
I'd just like to ask any council members here, we've had time to review the changes and see if we have any questions for the committee while they're present.
I don't have any further questions than what I brought up the last time, although I will recommend to the council, when it's appropriate, that we exclude acting on Article 4, Section 4.010F.
01F?
F. It reads, "No town councillor shall hold any other town-appointed position except as a member of an advisory committee created by the council, council, or an ex officio member of a committee created by the town manager, or as permitted by the charter." I believe that, and I brought it up the last time, I think the committee also agreed that that section needs a little bit of work to clearly reflect the intent that they had. But I believe it's in contradiction to Article 2, Section 2 of the town charter. So, I would recommend that we don't move that one and only that one section in Article 4.
The other comment I was going to make is the concerns that Mr. Page raised on that last one, last meeting concerning open space committee and community preservation. Has that been addressed? Or it does it need to be?
I suggest that that be also left out at this point. I know the town manager is working on a bylaw for the community preservation committee, and that will be presented to you at a future date.
So, the only reference, so that would be Section 10.080, no action be taken on that section as well.
What's the section again?
10.080.
Thank you. Mr. Vice President, I believe that we're in a continuation of the public hearing, are we not? So, I think we, before we can take any action, we have to open the floor to public comment.
Okay. So, we have a public comment at this time? Do we have any comments from the public regarding this? No other comments from the council?
No, one more question for the committee. We had asked, but I had asked actually, whether the committee would be willing to continue in that capacity, and at that time you hadn't really met as a committee and discussed it. Have you given that any thought?
We have. We, all the members were polled, and unanimously, I had a conversation with your president and told him that the committee felt that all of those issues on that list of recommendations should go back to the individual department heads for their input to the town council. The committee felt that it was more of a policy decision, and the input on those issues was directly related to the departments. So, that was the conversation I had with him.
Okay.
I had asked if he wanted that in writing, and he asked, that it wasn't necessary.
Okay.
Makes sense.
But as it relates to the two sections that were just, that are probably not going to be passed tonight, you're willing to reexamine those and submit them as originally intended?
Oh, we, you mean the two that you've asked, that no action be taken? We presumed that you somehow would create the language.
Okay.
That was our.
I just kind of wanted to make sure it was, so when we were done tonight, we kind of knew what was, what the next step was. Okay. Very good. Thank you.
I think then it's important that we somehow put it in our tickler system, either through the clerk's office or whatever, so that we don't let this thing slide.
Yeah, I do that. It should be, I would imagine it should be on the next agenda, at least for discussion. So, you're ready to entertain a motion, Mr. Vice President?
I am. I'm letting Denise mark something up here, but I'd like you to take it under consideration to exclude the two amendments that you made to those bylaws. So, because this isn't in front of you, it would be to accept the changes to the East Long Meadow general bylaws excluding changes to Article 4, Section 10F, and correct me if I'm wrong.
No, it's correct.
And Section 10.080. And these were recommended by the bylaw subcommittee to bring the general bylaws into conformity with the town charter. But I'd like to also add, and to forward, set, accept the changes to the town manager, the town manager shall forward the revised general bylaws to all department heads for review. Upon review of the revised general bylaws, department heads will be asked to recommend any additional changes back to the council for consideration at a future town council meeting, no longer than December 31 of 2017.
That last section confuses me. If we vote and accept these tonight, they are the new bylaws.
Well, I think the way it's being phrased is to put these bylaws back to the department heads so that they have a chance to look at them.
No, no, those were other sections. Those were other matters, not this, not these. Am I misreading of something, or?
I think she means the whole package, correct?
Wouldn't it be to accept the recommendations that the bylaws review committee did?
Right.
But there may be additional changes that the depart, it was never brought to any of the departments, and they may have changes that would also impact it. So, to accept what is already there now.
Yeah, we can, we can.
You can't do that?
I think actually what you're referring to, if this council, and this council obviously has more work to do on the bylaws.
Right.
Then it might be more appropriate for us then to have discussion with the various department heads in the context of that work as it relates to the entire, the bylaws in its entirety.
So, that's really what that is saying?
It sort of puts it in abeyance for a few months, so there's not clarity of what the language of our bylaws are. I think, I have to say that we vote on this excluding that 4F and 1080 point arrow, that's it. And if any committees or our departments want to make further changes, then we'll treat it as we treated this, have it at two meetings and make revisions accordingly. But to have this suspension, I don't, I don't think that's what we were intending.
That is not the intent.
No.
It's to accept the bylaws as recommended, except for those changes that you made.
That's it.
But then, you know, to have me forward them to the departments, and we'll go over any recommendations the department had, we don't want it to be helter-skelter where you've got one that comes in next month and then another one comes in in three months, and we're constantly changing.
No, they can make, they can make changes on their, in their due, you know, you can set a deadline for them, but that has to be totally independent of this vote, and we would have to treat their changes the same way we treated this. We'd have a, read it one meeting, have another meeting, vote on it, the public hearing concept, I mean, you know, have a public hearing and then address it, but not, because what the motion suggests is that these are in limbo pending review of other committees, and I don't think that's what we wanted.
I agree. Certainly within your purview and power to, if you want to submit it to the department heads and ask for their comments and reviews, that certainly, you don't need a vote of the council to do that. That's well within your job description, so.
Well, but I want buy-in from the council that they do want that.
Oh, I think, I think we all agree that we welcome comment.
If you think it's settled now, then.
No, it's not, it's only, no, this is, it's in place now.
Cementing it to.
Cement it at this moment, but however, just like any rule, set of laws, they can change. So, if the planning department says, you know what, that language about that, we want to tweak it. We can tweak it, but we'll take that as an independent matter before the council, not in any way suggesting that this approval is going to be on hold pending their comment.
That wasn't the intent, right.
No, but that would be an unintended consequence.
So, maybe the wording is a little.
It's also worth mentioning that within the charter, and I don't remember the timeframe, but the, this, the council is bound to causing a reevaluation every so many years of the bylaws by committee.
Because there are things in them now that we want to make sure.
Absolutely, and that's why I say we have more work that we have to do.
Yeah. We don't want to wait till.
You guys have to do.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's right. It's easy for you to say, we all have to do it.
So, it's not, it's by no means a done deal at this point.
George?
George. Make a suggestion that if you want both things there, do them as two separate motions, one simply to accept excluding the two, and then if you want another motion to, send it to the department heads, make that a separate motion, so you have clear cut.
I don't think we need a motion for that.
No, because to narrow this point, I think the town manager has that authority, well within her scope.
Yeah, I agree, but if they wanted to do it, just do it as a separate motion.
So, Mr. Vice President, I would move that we accept the changes to the East Long Meadow general bylaws as recommended by the bylaws review subcommittee to bring the general bylaws into conformity with the town charter, with the exception, or to exclude Article 4, Section 4.010F, and Section 10.080.
I'll second that motion.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes.
I think bylaws roll call vote? Bylaw roll call vote? I think it's a by, a roll call vote. I'm almost sure.
Do we have to close the public hearing before we entertain this vote? Because a public hearing, I don't remember doing a vote to close it.
You didn't close the public hearing?
No, I think so.
We did not close the public hearing.
All right, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing unless there's any other comments from anyone?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And do we want the roll call vote?
Now, we need a roll call vote, correct?
Yep, do you want me to remake the motion?
Yes, please.
Okay. And I move to accept the changes to the East Long Meadow general bylaws as recommended by the bylaws review subcommittee and bring the general bylaws into conformity with the charter, with the exception of Article 4, Section, Article 4, Section 4.010, F as in Frank, and Section 10.080. Those sections to be excluded.
And I will second that.
Joe?
Aye.
Eric?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Don?
Yeah.
Kathy?
Aye.
And myself. Aye.
Great work, guys. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate all the help.
Thank you.
I think we're going to 9B now.
Yep.
This one's easy.
Do we have a time?
Yep, we're past it. It was 6:45, so we're in great shape.
Great. We're actually, yeah. 9B pertains to change of manager request for the 99 West LLC doing business as 99 Restaurant and Pub. I guess you're here to represent that entity?
Now, you need to open the hearing.
Okay. So, I'd like to open the public hearing regarding this matter.
You're here a lot.
I have the process you have to go through.
Yeah, let me get. Okay, the reason for the continuation of this public hearing is to address the by.
No.
Sorry.
There you go.
Here we go. I need that because there's something missing up this one here. The reason for this public hearing is to discuss the request for a change of manager of the 99 Restaurant and Pub. Let me introduce the council members from left to right. If I start with myself, Mike Kane, Kathy Hill, Don Anderson, Paul Federici, Eric Madison, Joe Ford. This is a public hearing, and the procedure is as follows. I will open the public meeting. I will then have the applicant present his or her plan to the council. The meeting is recorded, and I will have, will need persons who are speaking to identify themselves clearly and state their home address for the record. The part that was missing off this year is the clerk will read the legal notice into the record. After the applicant has finished his or her presentation, I will open a hearing for public input, and I think we're ready to go at that point, so.
My name is Kristen Kinnis. I'm the general manager of the 99 here in town in East Long Meadow. I reside at Russell Road in Westfield, Massachusetts. I'm here to be approved for a name to. Um, I'm here to be approved for a name change in the liquor license because I did take over as a general manager, um, in May. Um, I believe you submitted all the paperwork and fees that we have needed too. A little bit of history about myself. I've been a manager with ninety-nine restaurants for just about a total of ten years. This is actually my second time in East Long Meadow. I was an assistant there a few years ago, um, so I'm returning to town. All of our managers are sort of safe certified in alcohol, including myself, as well as our team members. We do have our own alcohol training for responsive, responsible service of alcohol. We have forty-eight front of house team members who are trained in this. Our policies within our company do tend to be a little bit stricter than state law and they are required to be recertified every two years.
Thanks. Tom, could you, um, read the legal notice, please?
Yes, sir. Notice is hereby given under Chapter one thirty-eight of the general laws that ninety-nine West LLC doing business as ninety-nine Restaurant and Pub, three ninety North Main Street, East Long Meadow, Massachusetts, has applied for a change in manager to Kristen Kinnis. The town council will hold a public hearing on the application on Tuesday, August eighth, two thousand seventeen, at six forty-five P M. in the Council on Agent Meeting Room three twenty-eight North Main Street, East Long Meadow, Massachusetts.
Thank you. Thank you. So, um, I believe our public meeting is open and, does anyone have any comments at this time? No, any comments from the, uh, council?
So you were saying that you served in this capacity before?
Yes.
Yep. And, um, and this is our, it will take effect upon our vote, or is there going to be the current manager leaving at a certain point, or has that current manager already left?
That current manager has already left.
And you're currently serving on interim basis at that position, right?
Yes, I'm, I'm within our company officially, the general manager.
Okay.
Okay, is it? No other comments, right?
I move that we close the public hearing.
So move.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Further, I move that we approve the application for, uh, Kristen Kinnis. Did I say that correctly? Kristen Kinnis as the manager of the ninety-nine as indicated on the application.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I don't think it is, no.
We don't need a roll call on this, so.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Good luck.
I like my beer really cold.
So do we need a motion to return back to the, um?
Yeah, it was in the original motion. It was in the body of the original motion, so we can just go back to the adjourned item.
Back to item eight A.
Okay, so, um, orders of the day, we're up to licensing matters here. Common vicular license for Parker Senior Care LLC doing business as the Reserve at East Long Meadow. So we're looking for a motion to approve, um, the common vicular license for Parker Senior Care LLC doing business as the Reserve at East Long Meadow.
So move.
Second. Any discussion?
Just a question, it's more gee whiz, I'm just, is this, this is a, um, senior housing project, correct?
Yes.
So they're going to, they sell products in the senior housing co? I mean, I know, it's not relevant to the approval, I'm just curious. They sell products within there to the residents?
I, I wouldn't know that. And I don't know if there's anyone here that can answer that tonight, so.
Nobody here? Okay, it, it's irrelevant to the approval of the, so I, but I was just curious.
Okay. Motion's on the floor, so. Hello?
So we have a motion.
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
So, um, under B, all business. Last, uh, month, we did post for, uh, a replacement for era and there were seven people that responded to that and that process, I'm just looking for the date that it was actually closed.
August fourth.
Was it August fourth?
Yeah.
So the, uh, acceptance timeframe has expired. We have seven people and it will be continued at our monthly meeting, um, in September. So. That's great.
Yeah. Glad to see the interest.
Absolutely.
That's a good.
Right, yeah. It started out a little slow, but, um, we ended up with seven, which is great, so.
Good.
Under new business, request for a zoning bylaw amendment to create a mixed use overlay district. I guess we have Frank here to give us a breakdown on what's new and exciting.
Yeah. Thank you. My name is Frank Fitzgerald. I'm an attorney representing M and A Realty, three thirty Chestnut Street in East Long Meadow. My office is at forty-six Center Square. This is, uh, the beginning of a procedure. As you know, we came to the council before with the presentation as to the beginning of this project and basically starting a dialogue with the town for this exciting project to, uh, begin looking into what makes good sense for the town and what makes good sense for encouraging development. One of the items that we've been discussing with the town manager and, and the town planner has been the concept of an overlay district which would enable, which would encourage this development while at the same time providing the town with, uh, the ability to approve, uh, site plan approval so that the project, uh, would move forward with, with scrutiny and, and compliance with what the town requires. So in this particular case, my understa- our understanding of the zoning process in the town with the town council now is that we present this to the town council and you, if you decide to refer it to the planning board for a, a public hearing and further discussion. And our intention would be prior, during that, uh, public hearing process, whether it takes one meeting or more, or two or three, to have whatever modifications the town deems appropriate, uh, uh, made to the, uh, the overlay, overlay district itself and then come back to this board for a final approval.
I got a question for the council. It isn't, you know, we're reviewing the charter. I, I don't see why we have to give permission to the planning board. Can't they go directly to the planning board to start this process? Isn't that really outside of our?
We ran into this once before and it's, it's, it's.
It's a convoluted process, but it.
It is. It's convoluted and confusing. The simplest way to do it is, is for us to just simply refer it to the planning board. They will review it, um, hold meetings, hold a public hearing, uh, more than one public hearing if they feel necessary, forward it to us with recommendations. We will then hold a public hearing before it's adopted as a by. It will go through the same process we do in the adoption of any other bylaw, um, at that point. So it goes kind of through two processes at that point. So really, tonight, all we're doing is referring it.
That's maybe something we really want to look at in the future to amend, to streamline a process. We're giving permission to go to the planning board. When the planning board then has to go through an open process, where really they should go directly to the planning board.
I've been thinking a lot about that because I thought the same thing. It seems ridiculous for us to do it and then send it to them. But if, you being the governing body, if there was something that was really offensive that was being proposed, you could not forward it to the planning board and I think maybe that's the reason behind it.
I can address the council.
Thanks.
This procedure is laid out in Mass General Law, Chapter forty B, where it states that it has to go to the, uh, to you people first, either the board of selectmen or in this case, the town council. The petition needs to be presented to you. You then need to refer it to the planning board. This is in Mass General Law, forty B, if you want to look it up. So that's why we do it this way. It's, it's not really our option to do it a different way.
It's Mass General Law is what you're thinking about.
Yes.
Thanks for the clarification. That's too bad that this.
So, um, I guess we'll be looking for a motion to, um, refer the zoning bylaw amendment to create a mixed use overlay district to the planning board for a public hearing.
I, I'll move that we refer to the planning board for their review, comment, and public hearings as submitted by Mr. Fitzgerald.
A second, Stagan.
I'd like to have some, uh, comment though. I mean, I'm not telling the planning board what to do, nor like, well, ever, or maybe, well, who knows? But George, your thought of, uh, you know, back in the day, we used to have Pioneer Valley Planning Commission funds. Do we have any, uh, technical, any technical assistance from them still available to scrutinize this matter?
Uh, we, we can apply for, uh, belty, local technical assistance grant to do that. I don't know what they've got left. Uh, I believe they have done their, their, they have paid out all of the grants that they had for the first half. So they will not be looking at that again until December.
All right. Well, if it's an option to look into without creating any undue delay, that would be, that's my suggestion. And the other point is this overlay district in, doesn't overlay at all in any, any of the west Mass control property. That is correct, okay.
And actually, the council has to redo, there's a second, second part of this process where we would come back and ask the council to reach, allow this overlay district to be allowed at this particular site in the town.
Exactly.
So that's just creating. Change the zoning thing. And I, on your comment, Mr. Anderson, um, I don't want to spend my client's money, but certainly if there's some peer review or other, other things, uh, that would be a town thought would be appropriate, the scope of this project justifies, uh, the client or the petitioner in reimbursing the town for some of those independent reviews and expenses. So I think I would have that discussion with my client if that were necessary. Thank you.
Thank you. Motion's on the floor?
You want to?
The motion's still.
Sorry, on the floor, sorry.
Seconded at the vote. It's been seconded, yep.
Sorry, seconded. Okay, any, any other further discussion?
No, there's, uh.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, um, we're down to eight D financial matters.
I can speak to that as well.
I'm going to have, um, Denise, Denise has paperwork here so she can explain this better and then we'll entertain a motion.
Y'all have a copy of the resolution? This is a pretty pro forma authorization to authorize whoever, when, when there's leasing, going on for a large piece of equipment like this. And it really is just, um, a document that, uh, allows me to, but it has to be approved by you all, allows me to sign on behalf of the town. Even though I have the authority, uh, this is a million dollar piece of equipment and I'm glad to have your added authority to that. I think, Jim, Sarah, had you looked at over, right?
The only reason, this is coming before the council, um, as the manager says, she has the authority to negotiate and design this contract. You've already made the authorization of the appropriation to fund the purchase of the fire truck. We're running into an issue with, um, the leasing company and their form documents for this and their council is looking for a specific resolution by the legislative body authorized it to sign. And this entity is out of Ohio and, and even though we're telling them, we don't need a specific vote from the council in order to move forward legally, rather than get bogged down and pushing back and forth and beating your chest that somebody's going to win, it was easier to suggest to Sarah and the manager that we submit the auto resolution here for you to vote on it. It really has no legal effect because you, you can't expand on the powers that the charter's given to the manager anyway, but it will placate the lessors, council, and really make this an easier process for this completed, so.
We authorize the debt when we approve the budget. Do they want to accept that?
No. It really is, I, I've, I've, I've done this battle like probably four times already.
It's probably signatory authority we're concerned about, who's supposed to sign it, so this thing's almost like, you know.
I, I, I mean, I don't mind it for formality, but it's.
It's just belt and suspenders, really.
You already have the authority. You've already got the appropriation.
Yeah, but like I said, I've seen it a bunch.
I was wondering why it was before us.
Yeah, that's, that's all it is. It's not that we're overlooking something that truly is just, that's the way the leasing companies like to do it. You're better off just doing it. It doesn't hurt.
So then I move to accept the resolution as submitted.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Anything to make your job easier.
Well, I don't know that that did anything, but.
We discuss it, why don't we take time to vote on it?
So the, um, item two, emergency capital request.
I can speak to that.
Denise is going to, uh, will bring us up to date on the Vinland situation.
You can, you can, you can see the email that you received in your packet. I was unaware that there was a need for this grinder so urgently. And when I asked Bruce about it, he said, um, it, it's a grinder that's part of the sewer project, so I don't need to tell you or describe to you what it's grinding. I just wanted to be sure there wasn't any, any of that stuff like flying out in the air or something and that's why it was urgent. It's just, it's ready to fail, but rather than wait until it really does fail and we have a mess, um, and we have the money, uh, now's the time to do it, according to Bruce and, and Sarah. And it was already on the agenda when I got notice of this, so I don't have more details than that.
So just, just a quick procedural question on the kind of checks and balances. Something's about to fail.
I.
It's got a day, an hour, six weeks, six years? Like, I, I don't know what that means.
A point has been made.
A point has been made. Okay, so you're getting a recommendation from a department head saying this is necessary and?
I got it through the finance department and I didn't get it from, you know, Bruce's interim and, you know, we're just trying to, I don't, I, I honestly don't know how this ended up being so urgent when I, I met with Bruce earlier this week and Sarah's, you know, always available. I'm always available to any department head. So I, I really don't know, um, exactly why it was, um, so urgent, except that he does not want it to fail and maybe it was something that was overlooked in the transition from Bob to him. I, I.
I just, I just don't want to set a precedence with, with stuff. It's kind of an old printer and it might need to be repaired, so it's urgent.
I think there's a difference between a pumping station and a printer.
I'm not, you know, there's a big difference, but my point being that, you know, these are unplanned expenses. We have to be careful.
Yeah.
I, I'm not, you know, I guess I'm not questioning his word. I'm just wondering in the future that there's a system of checks and balances.
To avoid the chicken little.
You're vetting these out.
Right, right.
You're vetting these out. You know why, okay, and it's been, yes, verified it's going to fail.
That's the point.
Versus something that did fail that we need to replace on an emergency basis. I guess that's a little, I'm looking at it a little differently.
I agree with you.
Does that make sense? Like, I don't want to nitpick it. I'm not questioning his ability to identify a problem. I'm just.
The process was a little convoluted.
Yes.
I thought. So I'm glad you agreed.
Do we know what the repercussions are if this fails? No, I'm serious. I mean, it's, it's a perfectly legitimate answer. I mean, someday my heart's going to fail. I know the repercussions, so I want to make sure I take care of it before it happens. I mean, it's the same thing. It's a pumping station.
The inability to be able to change solid material to liquid material would be a short description.
I mean, will cause a backup for lack of a more intelligent. Both figuratively and literally.
Grinder will make it into a liquid state.
It, it doesn't sound like you've had much conversation with the DPW on it.
I did not.
Okay. So I guess, how can, how can we feel confident that a replacement versus a repair is appropriate?
I am taking his, his word and Sarah's word on that, probably more because Sarah is so careful about not spending anything outside of what's planned that they must have had a conversation that I was not aware of. And what you're asking me now is exactly what I told them. Do you understand that? No, who's going to answer these questions? I probably should have had both Bruce and Sarah come. And in the future.
First expensive. If it was two thousand dollars, we may not be as, you know, twenty-six thousand dollars. And, and, yeah, so maybe lesson learned in the future that for all of us that we probably going to need a little more data.
Absolutely.
You know, we're going to have to make a decision since we're not going to meet again until.
September.
Whole month.
Second Tuesday in September that, that we're probably going to have to take it on faith and approve this thing, which is, makes me a little uncomfortable, but, you know, truth be told.
I agree.
So I, I'm confused too by the wording. She said this is from the sewer enterprise fund. Is she referring to the overlay?
No, there's an enterprise fund.
Yes, I know there's an enterprise fund, but within the enterprise fund is overlay. It's, it's, um, it's still free cash, for lack of better terms.
I don't think it's from free cash. They seem to think it was a.
It's going to affect the sewer rates.
I thought she was saying that it was. Oh, it's from the vehicle replacement reserve.
Yeah, she came and specifically said that today. That's where it should come from.
A vehicle replacement reserve?
In the enterprise.
In the enterprise fund. In the enterprise fund, they have, they have money set aside.
Oh, they do, they set, set money aside.
So they wouldn't have to come to us for.
Well, given that the council's not planning to meet for another month, I think what, chime in here if you guys feel differently, but I think I'd make a motion then, that we authorize a twenty-six thousand dollar expenditure and direct the town manager to approve such costs only after she's thoroughly satisfied that repair is not warranted versus replacement and that the transfer of the funds from that account to another is appropriate.
Well, I, just one minor clarification, since it seems to be the common thing here, you keep saying repair rather than replace, but they're replacing the grinder, they're not repairing.
That's what he's saying, maybe can't repair.
Maybe it's repairable rather than replacement.
He wants to vet one hundred percent, it was absolutely necessary to replace, not repair, so I, I would, I would second that motion. As is, with all.
It's, it's tough without clarification, can it even be overhauled, you know?
Yeah.
I don't know, I mean, if it's.
And it's probably ridiculous for us to delay it for another month, given the potential risks involved.
Yes.
So by just authorizing it and letting the town, you know, directing the town manager that, and she's satisfied all those criteria are appropriate.
Took some vacation time too, where he wasn't readily available, you know, so.
He's really been around, but, you know, there's been a lot.
So we, we second the motion, and just in terms of further discussion, just ask in the future, that one of them has to be here for this kind of ask, so we can fully understand.
If it's a, yeah, but usually you would have it fully clarified, and I would know the answers. And, and you'd have something more than, than just this.
Okay, so we have a motion, it's been seconded, right? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. I guess we need to leave open session and move to executive session?
So I, can I go ahead?
I'll make a motion to move into executive session for the purpose of discussing strategy with respect to litigation with the intent to return to open session only for the purpose of adjournment.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. We have to do the roll call.
Okay, we'll start with Joe?
Aye.
Eric?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
Kathy?
Aye.
Myself?
Aye.
So we'll go to exec, can we take a five minute recess while?
Absolutely.